Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to Pennsylvania County Planning Commission meeting, October the first, two thousand and nineteen. Roll call. Ms. Meese?
Present.
Ms. Henderson?
Present.
Dr. Miller?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Stowe?
Yeah.
Mr. Horn?
Present.
Mr. Haymore?
Present.
Mr. Dudley?
Present.
And myself. To let the record show, eight present, zero absent. Will everyone please rise for a moment of silence and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance? Thank you. All citizens of the United States will join me in pledging allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Hearing of the citizens, no one has signed up. Does anyone here wish to address the commissioners on anything other than what's on the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move on. Thank you. Approval of the agenda. Need a motion for approval of the agenda?
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman. We accept the minutes as presented for the agenda.
Second it.
Motion by Mr. Horn, second by Mr. Haymore. The agenda be approved as presented. All in favor, raise your right hand. The motion's passed, eight four, zero against. Approval of the minutes, September the third, two thousand and nineteen.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the minutes as presented in our package.
Second it.
Motion by Mr. Dudley, second by Mr. Stowe. Approval of the minutes as presented in the package. All in favor, raise your right hand. The motion's passed, eight four, zero against. The chairman's report. Ms. Meese, we welcome you back. It's certainly nice to have you, and I want you to know how proud is for you to have a well recovery and fast recovery. And we know that the troubles you have been through in the past months, it's certainly nice to have you back with us.
Thank you. I've missed y'all, and I just want to thank the commissioners for those beautiful arrangement of flowers you sent during the funeral and also my flowers with this accident. Thank you. It's always good to be back.
At this time, I'd like to welcome our supervisor, former chairman from Chatham Blairs District, Mr. Warren, and also Dr. Miller, who I bounce to the district. There's a million vows, welcome to have you. And in our audience tonight, we also have a former chairman and supervisor of Chatham Blairs District, Mr. Claude Whitehead. Welcome. Certainly glad to have you with us. Also, we have, gosh, mine just left me in a minute. Musta Short, I'm sorry, Musta Short, our treasurer. Welcome, certainly glad to have you with us. And our county attorney, Mr. Hunt, and Mr. Sides. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to Article Five, Division Seven of the Pennsylvania County zoning ordinance, we, the planning commission, have been empowered to hear and decide specific applications in support of said ordinance and to make recommendations to the board of supervisors or the board of zoning appeals. In accomplishing this important task, we are charged with promoting the health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of Pennsylvania County. We must ensure that all our decisions and recommendations be directed at these goals and that each be consistent with the environment, the comprehensive plan, and the best interest of Pennsylvania County, its citizens, and its posterity. Anyone here to speak to the board regarding zoning cases will be limited to three minutes. At seven oh four, case R nineteen dash oh two eight is open to public hearing. Ms. Hayes?
Case R nineteen oh two eight, Victoria Truitt, has petitioned to rezone point eight six one of an acre located on Mount Cross Road in the Tunstall Election District from RC one Residential Combined Subdivision District to A one Agricultural District to combine with the adjacent farm. Once the property is rezoned to A one, all uses listed under Section thirty-five, one seventy-eight are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Aubrey Pritchett is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Pritchett, will you come forward, please? Good evening and welcome.
Good evening.
Do you have anything you would like to present to the commissioners other than what Ms. Hayes has already presented to us?
I was just asked to come and be here in her place. She's in Kansas, lives out there, and she asked me to come to represent her.
Any questions for Mr. Pritchett? No one has signed to speak up for, against this case. Does anyone here came in late, wished to address the commissioners on this? Thank you, Mr. Pritchett. At seven oh six, case R nineteen dash oh two eight is closed to public hearing. Mr. Stowe?
This is, it's pretty easy. The house is sitting between in a corner, in between, in a corner of the cow pasture, on both sides. There's trees across the road, so with all of that, I make a motion that we recommend this request to VDA. I mean, to supervisors.
I second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Stowe, second by Mr. Haymore. The case R nineteen dash oh two eight be recommended to the board of supervisors be changed from RC one to A one. Any discussions? If not, Ms. Hayes, will you call the roll for the vote?
Mr. Motley?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Stowe?
Yes.
Ms. Meese?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Haymore?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Case R nineteen dash oh two eight, by vote of eight four, zero against, recommend the board of supervisors the zoning be changed from RC one to A one. Seven oh seven, case R nineteen dash oh two nine, open to public hearing. Ms. Hayes?
Case R nineteen oh two nine, Robin Taylor, has petitioned to rezone twenty-one point four one acres located on Smith Mountain Road in the Callens-Gretton Election District from R one Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A one Agricultural District for single-wide mobile home, a cabin, and for agricultural purposes. Once the property is rezoned to A one, all uses listed under Section thirty-five, one seventy-eight are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Ms. Taylor is here to represent the petition.
Ms. Taylor, will you come forward, please? Good evening and welcome.
Thank you.
Do you have anything you'd like to present to the commissioners other than what Ms. Hayes has already presented to us?
I do not. I just want to thank you for your time and consideration.
Any questions for Ms. Hayes?
I don't.
No one has signed up to speak against this. Anyone came in late, did not have opportunity, wished to address? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Taylor? At seven oh eight, case R nineteen dash oh two nine is closed to public hearing. Ms. Meese?
Mr. Chairman, I have, first off, I have not received any opposition on this case, no phone calls, and this lot is adjacent to A one properties. So therefore, in case R dash nineteen dash oh two nine, I make a recommendation that the planning commission recommends this to the board of supervisors to be approved.
Motion by Ms. Meese, second by Mr. Dudley, recommend to the board of supervisors the zoning be changed. Any discussion? If not, Ms. Hayes, will you call the roll for the vote?
Mr. Motley?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Stowe?
Yes.
Ms. Meese?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Haymore?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Case R nineteen dash oh two nine, by vote of eight four, zero against, recommend to the board of supervisors the zoning be changed from R one to A one.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Uh huh.
At seven oh nine, case R nineteen dash oh three O is open to public hearing. Ms. Hayes?
Case R nineteen oh three O, Colleen Altis, has petitioned to rezone one point six five acres located on Franklin Turnpike in the Chatham Blairs Election District from R one Residential Suburban Subdivision District to B two Business District General for future commercial development. Once the property is rezoned to B two, all uses listed under Section thirty-five, three sixty-five are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Ms. Altis is here to represent the petition.
Ms. Altis, will you come forward, please? Good evening and welcome.
Good evening.
Do you have anything you would like to present other than what Ms. Hayes has already presented to the commissioners?
No, I just thank you for letting me be here, and there is a commercial on the left and the right.
Any questions? No one has signed up to speak on this? Does anyone came in late, wished to address?
I think someone signed up on the wrong sheet.
Okay, we'll get to that. Ms. Altis, if you'll have a seat near the front, because you'll get to come back under the button. Did I see a hand that wished to speak?
Yes.
Come forward, please. Please state your name and address, and good evening and welcome.
Thank you. My name's Brenda McCormick. I live at eight sixty-eight Mount Herman Circle.
Go ahead.
My property backs the property that Ms. Altis is trying to have rezoned. We have a couple of questions about that. It's a creek on that property where she's trying to have rezoned, and we wanted to know what would be done about the creek? Would it be repiped or what? Because we do have an issue when it rains extensively that the creek comes up into our land, because it's lowland land back there, and it stays swampy back there quite a bit. But right now, the creek has dried up because of the drought.
Yes, ma'am.
Another question I have, I own a road called Adams Road that backs that property.
Yes, ma'am.
My concern is that if a place of business is put there, I do not want traffic to be coming down that road. It is not maintained by anyone but my neighbor and myself. It's not gravelled or anything. My dad put that road in there for people along forty-one whose property backed that road to be able to have access to their property other than off of forty-one. And I wanted to know, could a barrier be put there to keep traffic coming that way if a place of business is put there?
Yes, ma'am. If you, if you owned the road?
I do.
I don't see no reason why you cannot put a barrier unless it's deemed as a public outlet.
It's listed as a sixty-foot right-of-way.
Yes, ma'am. Well, that you would have to discuss with the, anybody started to use it, if it's already listed. Am I correct on that, Mr. Hunt? That it's listed as a public outlet? But if anybody started using, I would say you would have to discuss that with the people and work that out. We do not have no authorization on that.
Okay. And a question we had also is, does she have to have a sixty-foot right-of-way off of forty-one to get into that property that she's talking about having rezoned?
I'm going to discuss that later on. That will be coming up later, later on in the presentation.
All right. That's my three main concerns. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Anybody else wished to address? Ms. Altis? Do you have anything rebuttal you'd like to, unheard questions or?
No, sir. My husband's owned that property for forty-four years, and Foodline tried to buy it a long time ago, and the real estate messed my husband up, so he couldn't sell it. So they wanted more money, and they wouldn't take it, so. But it's been up for sale by owner for quite a while.
Okay. So right now, you do not have a purchaser in mind or no down payment or anything or closing?
No, sir.
So the garden, the flow of the creek, that will stay the same, and that will be up to the, if you sell the land, it'll be up to the developer. Is that correct, Mr. Hunt? Under the soil erosion plan, is that correct, Mrs. Sides?
If that site is developed, there would have to be a full site development plan. It would address access and entrance permits, and it would address erosion, sediment control, and stormwater.
Right.
So that would really dictate how the property could be developed. It would have to be addressed.
Any questions for? Nobody else has signed up? Thank you, Ms. Altis.
Thank you, Mr. Motley.
At seven fifteen, case R nineteen dash oh three O is closed to public hearing. Commissions, that is in the Chatham Blairs District. I want to thank Ms. Altis. I met her up there last Wednesday. She showed over the plans. I went over the property, and she explained what she was aiming to do, and her question about road frontage I was going to bring up. And I called Ms. Hayes today. Forty-one, according to the scale on our map, and my rule that I could use, is not seventy-five foot right-of-way for R one on a state-maintained road. So therefore, this lot is out of compliance with the zoning ordinance. Go to your map and look. It's the best, she said sixty feet. I came up with fifty-five, but I'm sure she's a lot more correct, because I've been following her more. And you'll also notice in your package, you have a letter from Mr. Craddock with VDOT that's explaining the types of construction would be required to have an entrance off of forty-one. So with that to say, I would prefer, if nobody else had any other comments, I would prefer a motion to recommend to change the zoning to the supervisors from R one to B two due to those causes of no, being out of compliance with the zoning ordinance and the entrance to it off of forty-one.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Stowe, second by Mr. Haymore on case R nineteen dash oh three O to recommend to the board of supervisors the zoning be changed from R one to B two. Any other discussions? If not, Ms. Hayes, will you call the roll?
Mr. Motley?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Stowe?
Yes.
Ms. Meese?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Haymore?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Case R nineteen dash oh three O, by vote of eight four, zero against, recommend to the board of supervisors the zoning be changed from R one to B two. Thank you, Ms. Altis. At seven eighteen, case R nineteen dash oh three one is open to public hearing. Ms. Hayes?
Case R nineteen oh three one, Craig and Kristen Worsham have petitioned to rezone five acres located on Kendall Court in the Chatham Blairs Election District from R one Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A one Agricultural District for agricultural uses horses. Once the property is rezoned to A one, all uses listed under Section thirty-five, one seventy-eight are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, the Worshams are here to represent the petition, and also, there's a proffer in front of you that was submitted.
Right. So that is a written proffer in, in compliance with the zoning ordinance. Is that right, Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Worsham? Good evening, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I am Kristen, sorry.
Do you have anything you'd like to present to the commissioners other than what Ms. Hayes has already presented?
Well, I do. A few facts, if you'll allow me.
Yes, ma'am.
So I think, as she mentioned, the, the lot, the R one, Section thirty-five dash two twenty-two area regulations stipulate that to be R one, the lot must have a minimum of state-maintained road frontage measured between the side lot lines of seventy-five feet, except in a cul-de-sacs where the measurement is equal to thirty feet. This particular parcel is, has no road frontage of any kind. It is located off of a private, unmaintained road. It is gravel from Cherrystone, which is Route fourteen thirty-three, to my neighbor, Mr. Connor, who is directly across the street from me. Mr. Connor's the only one who's put gravel. Beyond that point, it is dirt, and it is unmaintained, and it is actually impassable further on down, down the, down the road. So it also is out of compliance in terms of its, its lot size. The ordinance does require an average of just under five acres to ten thousand feet. My lot is, is five acres, so that's, that's probably a lesser one. The road frontage is really one of the predominant reasons it is non-compliant. In addition, I share a border with two lots, which are zoned commercial, B two, and in this neighborhood of Cherrystone, there is quite a mix of properties. There is agricultural acreage, which is actually, has long frontage on Cherrystone Road. There is agricultural as well, across the street, on which there is a horse farm. There is actually light industrial, M two, which also has long frontage on fourteen thirty-three. And there is, of course, the R one and the business. So it is, it is quite a mix. I want to say that I purchased this parcel of land solely for the intent of putting my daughter's horses. We are residents of Cherrystone Road. This property is approximately a half a mile from our residence, and I was seeking acreage for pasture, as well as for a, what we call a barn house. It is a structure that is residential, and that is what we have a permit for through the county, a permit without penalty, that we have, have worked with Ms. Hayes, the Community Development Group zoning, and Mike Henderson. I do want to point out that, that our building permit, again, is without penalty, and it is a residential building permit, and that is what we are building. Our contractor is a licensed Class A contractor. He is Amish. And our structure, when completed, will have almost thirteen hundred square feet of living space. It has HVAC. We already have the, it will have HVAC. We already have the septic and the well installed. We're currently in the framing phase. All of our contractors are licensed, and Mr. Henderson, who is the building inspector, has been a wonderful resource for us and has been to the property many times, counseling us and working with us as we, as we build this structure. I think that the nature of the structure is new, potentially, to this county. It's certainly not new to other regions. This is a growing in popularity form of housing for equine enthusiasts because it incorporates both the house, as well as, as well as accommodations for horses. Our structure will meet and does meet all of the Virginia Building Code, and that was confirmed and verified before we were issued our permit. And again, that is part of our collaborative process with Mr. Henderson. As we move through the production phases, Mr. Henderson is a counsel to us, and we seek his advice, take his advice, and we are, I want to stress, we have a very positive relationship with the Community Development, Development Group. So we seek, we seek the rezoning from R one to place this lot firmly in compliance with the code so that we, this lot is appropriately zoned per the, per the ordinance. It's compliant. It's non-compliant right now. I want to move it into, into compliance. Excuse me, I'm suffering from a respiratory condition. I also want, a couple of other little things that I, that I want to point out. When we purchased this parcel, it had been on the market for a considerable amount of time. It had, it was completely overgrown. You could not walk onto this parcel. In fact, I bought it not exactly knowing what I was buying. It was impassable. It had briars under brush, thicket. So after, when I purchased the lot, and we had, we started clearing the land, that's another thing I want to talk about, because the land clearing firm that we used, we specifically chose because they also have farms and horses, and they understood the importance of preserving as much of the topsoil as we possibly could, as well as to correcting drainage. This lot slopes tremendously and has, was heavily eroded when we purchased it. In fact, I have a USDA report that I acquired, that I acquired from the USDA that noted the zones, because as soon as I bought it, I was interested in knowing what I had to do to amend the soil, to improve, to improve the soil. We've spent a considerable amount of time and resources in grading the site, in trying to deal with erosion issues that were present before, and in trying to deal with water issues. So that is something that I wanted you to know, that we are, we are very, very interested in improving and amending this property already. It's a vast improvement to what it was. We see it as an asset to this community. It's certainly an asset to the county from a revenue perspective, and I've invited some of the members to come and see what we're doing there so that they can understand this type of structure. So that's all I have to say at this, at this point. If there is any questions from the, from the commission at this time, I'd be happy to answer them.
Ms. Worsham?
Yes.
In our package, we have a building permit where y'all have obtained and been issued for this construction you're talking about. You have constructed and installed a fence?
Correct.
For which is not a normal fence. Is that correct? It's, I believe it's a high tinsel woven wire fence?
What, what we have constructed, and again, it was Hunting Creek Fencing Company, which is an Amish company, so it's, it's a very well-done fence. The fencing is actually a horse-safe woven wire. So it is designed to be safe for horses while keeping horses in and other predators out. We also have at the top of our fence, a, what's called a high-visibility coated thick wire of electric, and that is also to keep predators out and horses in. We did this to ensure that our horses would not get out and create any kind of nuisance. Our horses are Friesian sport horses. My daughter does dressage, and these are expensive, expensive horses, and their welfare is of incredible importance to us.
Any questions for?
Just a few, guys. Excuse me.
Sure. I have the same problem.
Sorry. How many horses?
We have two, and one that is actually, well, two are leased, and one is a yearling. So three, total of three. We have the yearling. We're bringing her mother. We don't actually technically, excuse me, own her mother. We're bringing her to, to be an oversight and a partner to her, her yearling now. And then we have another horse that is a free lease, and it is a dressage Friesian sport horse for my daughter to ride currently.
Any other questions?
Will the horses?
Sorry.
It's okay. Will the horses be in the field during the day and put up at night, or will they stay? You tell me.
Yeah, sure. Absolutely. So, so we're, we are, we believe in natural horse care to the, to the best we can, and horses' natural environment is out in the pasture. So generally, horses only come into the structure when it's extremely hot or when there's very foul weather, or it's extremely cold.
And you have three stalls, three horses?
We actually have four stalls.
Four stalls?
Yeah, we have, I might have said three, sorry, because I'm thinking of three down one side, and then the fourth.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
Any other questions? I have people signed up, so you'll get to come back to rebuttal?
Sure. Yes. I just, there was somebody that came in potentially late. I want to make sure that everybody that wanted to speak.
I'll give them.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Mr. William Davison? Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. Thanks, I appreciate it. I really don't see what the big deal on what Ms. Worsham is doing. To me, they got a beautiful place down there. It's a nice barn, ice barn, and they, and we've had horses in this neighborhood in tight streets over there for fifty years already, ever since I've been living in. I've been living there almost fifty. I mean, I think it's a wonderful thing. It's sad, sad to do. the community. I don't see why nobody would be fussing about it, but, you know. I mean, they got a view, they got a nice fence around it, and before they, before they moved over there, and, and that lot up there was, was in just old bushes and all kinds of stuff up there. And then they cleaned it up and put, put a building there, and it's nice. Everybody ought to see it. I really don't, I think it's, it's nice. We got people in here, and that, that cars in the backyard and all kind of stuff. I mean, that's, we're in the county. I mean, I think it's a good thing.
Any questions, Mr. Davison?
Mr. Davison, I understand you are across the Worshams?
Ma'am.
Do you live across the Worshams?
No, ma'am. I live on, I live right in front of the Chatham High School on the corner.
Okay.
Of Cherrystone Road. On the last one, right about, right across from that big biker field.
Right.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Davison.
Aight.
Mr. Shorter? Good evening, welcome, sir.
Good evening, um, commission members. My name is Vincent Shorter. I live at ten seventeen Cherrystone Road. I don't honestly understand completely why we're here tonight. I have verified with the county administration that the R one zoning designation of this parcel is a hundred percent legal and can be used for anything that is allowed on R one property. As we've already heard, they've obtained the R one building permit and are proceeding. They also notified me that everything the Worshams have expressed interest in doing with the property is also fully compliant with the R one designation. This leaves me to question the true intention of their purpose for the property. This would only lead one to believe that there is some deception within this request. Why would you apply to rezone property when the county has assured you that all your expressed intentions are allowed and legal under current statute? They mentioned about the noncompliance of the road frontage. I have copies of maps. If you all need them, you probably have them. But if you'll notice at the top right of the Cherrystone Park subdivision, when it was originally divided, the Board of Supervisors gave them a variance not requiring and specifically exempting the state, or the, the road, type of road, uh, frontage for these properties. So, they were given a variance by the Board of Supervisors when it was created. The county zoning ordinance is said to facilitate the creation of a convenient, attractive, and harmonious community, and I'll testify that the zoning in this neighborhood has worked well in that regard. As you can see, that the proposal of rezoning one parcel and an ocean of R one parcels to A one has begun the process of having a reverse effect. What is the tr- true number of residents that must surrender their wishes and desires to satisfy those of one? What is the greater society's obligation to correct an oversight or miscalculation of another? A one district, and they want to rezone to a district that doesn't require seventy-five feet of state road frontage. Well, there's seven districts that can do that. So, you must ask yourself the question of why did they randomly pick A one when everything that they've stated to the county they want to do is allowable under the current zoning? Our street has thirty-five homes on it in one-mile stretch. That is fairly dense in Pittsman County standards, maybe, maybe not New York City standards. The A one district defines as, as a rural district and may logically develop residentially at a low density. I think we're pretty heavy density for a one-mile stretch of road. The A one district also continues to state that it should be presumed that the agriculture and forestry activities may produce some noise, odors, and other effects. At a certain level of tolerance for those effects must be expected of those who dwell in this district. Well, I'm not expecting to tolerate these types of things in a residential district in which I own property. I'm a firm believer in the rule of law and landowner rights. I also believe that I have landowner rights. At whose expense and at what expense do the many have to pay to satisfy the desires of one?
Skipper, Mr. Shorter, can you summarize?
Sure.
About time to three minutes.
Sure. So, so, at, at the end of this process, what would the rezoning of this property make it consistent with? Nothing. It has R one all the way around it. I own two parcels that are around it. I own, I live on sixty-three, hundreds of an acre. I don't have a lot of room to get away from the noise, the odor, the other tolerable things that you're expected to tolerate in this district. Rezoning this case would make the lot in question inconsistent with every single parcel surrounding it. If you recommend this A one, nothing around it, touching it, will be A one. It will be the oddball with R one surrounding it, with the exception of the business district lot that goes all the way to Highway twenty-nine, which is understandable. I respectfully ask for you not to recommend this land for rezoning. If anyone needs that map with the exclusion or variance that was granted by the Board of Supervisors, I have it here.
Any question for Mr. Shorter? Thank you, sir.
Do you have a question?
Mr. Hugh Mitchell? Good evening and welcome.
How you doing?
How are you, sir?
Members of the zoning here. My name is Hugh Mitchell, and I live at one forty-five Afton Road, Blouse, Virginia. My interest in the land and on Cherrystone that we're speaking of, that, I bought the land across the street from the Worshams back approximately ten or fifteen years ago. The, the land was, been on the market for a long time, but when I acquired it, I tried at that time to rezone the property from A one to, I mean, from R one to A one, because I was considering putting a house over there and move out to sit there damn well and get some chickens and, and just, I have cows and everything, and maybe put a calf over there. Just, it was big enough property that it, I could have done what I wanted to do. At the same time, I didn't need all that land to mow grass, even though I was a lot younger. I could not get it zoned to A one, and so then I went and got the health department to come out, and we perked it, and I broke the land into three parts, three R one sections. I built a house there, and, uh, to be honest with you, the whole time I went over there and built the house, I went through, I guess I'd call it holy hell, because everybody didn't want me over there, because I was a modular home builder, and I built just a nice home to everybody else. But, you know, I got over that and everything, and I still own two lots across the road from the Worshams and, and across the road from their permanent residence. I guess you'd call it permanent residence, the big house there. And I've tried to respect them. I try to keep the land clean and what have you, but I've got two more lots that I'm going to put a house over if I live longer there for my health and everything. But, uh, the question I have is, uh, you know, I couldn't get the, uh, R one changed to A one, so I went that route and, and had the land perked and what have you. And so, what's going to happen there is my tax value and my price that I can sell those two lots and build a home is going to be reduced because there will be some records out there and also land that has been changed from R one to A one if it's approved. And, uh, and I'm concerned with my, with my value, and I'll have to go back to the county and also ask them to reduce the, uh, the value that they have on our, our one land because of this. And I'd be glad to answer any questions anybody has.
Any questions, Mr. Mitchell?
Mr. Mitchell, are you aware that they have a, a proffer of no manufactured housing, no intensive livestock, including swine, dairy poultry, defined in the zoning ordinance of thirty-five point one eighty-nine point two?
I wasn't aware that the, the construction had been built until it had been built, and, and I was told it was a, a horse barn or stable. And, uh, but I was told that I couldn't do it on my property, approximately ten years ago.
But, you know, you were saying you want to have some poultry and what have you, that this, the proffer stating that there will be no livestock?
That's the reason I went and had my land perked and, and broke it down in three different lots and built on one, and still have two lots to either sell or build a house.
Okay. All right.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Mitchell.
I'd like to thank you, gentlemen, ladies.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, the McConies, I believe that was on the case before. Uh, Mr. James Ludd? Good evening and welcome, sir.
Thank you, Chairman and Board, for listening. The property in question actually originally belonged to the property that I own across the street on Cherrystone. I don't know whether any of the board members are familiar with Cherrystone, but I would request that you do take a look at what is there and what has been done to this property. I was going to try to be, to be real brief, but if some people know me, it's very hard for me to be brief. I'm a salesman, so. I listened to the very first portion of this, and it seems like all we're talking about is horses and what we can do with this property for us, my children, my daughter, the equestrian, all of this, but not a bit is talked about the residential thing. When I bought my property, there was no zoning in the county. The zoning took place from what I read in ninety-one. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, my property had more property than where it is there. I have a barn on my property, but when the zoning started, I had the right to say, okay, I won't mind A one because I have a barn, and the previous owners to me actually had horses there. But I determined because it's R one, I'm not going to stir up the water. So, back to talking about this road. This road was cut when the owners of the property where I live auctioned it off in the eighties. Well, Kendal, the lumber company, bought the property on the very back side of this property, and they cut a road in there. So, when they did the auction, they could look at the properties. And so, that road was constructed. I personally have kept this property that they're speaking of across the street prior to them moving into the neighborhood. I bush hogged it. I kept it clean, not wiping out all the trees that were on it, but keeping the property proper, because it does affect me as a resident. I have talked to other people on the street. They agree with me a hundred percent. We don't want someone to come in and be able to change our R one protective residential subdivision to a farm, agricultural A one. We're not just talking about horses here. If you look at A one, you see a list of anything just about that can be done on that property. And just because they say we just have a horse, that doesn't mean that the next people who buy this property won't put some type of institution on there, or pigs, or hogs, or sheep, because it says that in it, that they can have sheep, and that you can have horses, and you can have hogs. You can have any kind of farm. So, anyway, the neighbors have told me, not every one of them, because I haven't done a consensus of everyone, some people say, well, uh, it doesn't really affect me. I don't want to get involved. And I said, well, I'm in the, you know, I'm here to represent not just me.
Skipper, Mr. Ludd, could you summarize your presentation, please?
All right. So, forget the horse thing. The property, they bought it for residential R one. If they didn't know that it was not R one, and it, and then they wouldn't put horses and stables on it, then consequently, they should have just not bought the property, won't do the proper investigation. I'm asking the Board to please deny this place being converted. If you just look at the property, they have wiped out five acres, and the soil has washed. I've got pictures of it on my phone. So, all I'm asking is, please, do not let one individual come in and change a neighborhood that has been there for years. Thank you.
Skipper, just a minute, Mr. Ludd. Any question for, uh, Mr. Ludd?
Yes.
Uh, you was talking about the property that you have and where you bond and do it. Are you aware of the property right beside you is zoned A one, that's right beside this barn?
Which property are you talking about?
Uh, it will be south, southwest of your barn.
Southwest. There's a lot of industrial property that I heard.
No, sir. The, the little, it's a little small house.
Oh, you're talking about the one acre?
Right before you get.
I had no earthly idea, but that mean, they've never had horses and pigs and any of this.
But that is.
I didn't know, I didn't know that it would, no, I didn't know that that was.
Yes, sir. This is zoned A one. And the back of your property, are you aware that the property is zoned M one?
Yeah.
That's joining your property?
Light industrial on the backside of my eight acres, that's correct.
Yes, so you're aware of that?
I am aware of that, yes.
So, okay. So, it is, uh, mixed zoning right in that area also, but I just, the truth is I answered.
Well, I'm not saying, yes, that there may be one property. I certainly wasn't, because that's only one acre. That's not five acres. It's not twenty acres or forty acres. It is just one acre.
But I just want to point out, everything you said that's allowed on A one on these five acres would also be allowed on the A one. I'm not trying to argue. I just want to point that out, that A one is A one.
Oh, I know that. That's what I'm saying. I know, but clarification of that.
Yes, sir.
And what you can put on A one, I'm well aware of that.
Okay.
And I'm also aware of what goes on residential one property as well.
Yes, sir.
And this property was purchased under R one. And why, all of a sudden, at the end of all this, that now we're asking to change it to, you know, to A one? I don't understand, but.
Any other questions?
That's I'm asking you folks to protect your interest and the citizens on our road. Please vote no.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Is that Claire Wor- Worsham? Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, sir. So, I am Claire Worsham. I am their daughter, the equestrian. I am thirteen years old. I attend Chatham Middle School in the eighth grade. This property was purchased solely to put my Frisian sport horses on, my one Frisian sport horse foal. There is a mare who is the mother of this foal that we will be bringing, as well as a riding horse, which is also a Frisian sport horse. The talk of noise and of odor, horses do not usually, horses are generally very clean animals, and these are very clean animals. I take very good care of my horses, and so they are very well groomed. Horses do naturally use the bathroom, but when man, but when well-maintained, manure piles do not cause much, if much of any odor at all. Noise, horses do neigh and whinny at each other. This is only on occasions when they are in distress, this is only on occasions when they are in stressful situations. The mare and the foal, and the foal have been weaned off of each other for a little bit over a year now, or no, just a year now. But there will be no, there should be no problem of noise unless the horses are distressed. And also, as for, we do not plan, like I said, these horses, this property was purchased solely for these horses, which I intend to train the foal. I do have experience in that matter. And, um, yeah, so, they would only, the property is only for these horses. As for the residential part of our barn house, or barn dominium, as we prefer to call it, I do intend to, when I graduate high school in three years, to go to college. I would like to attend UVA University, and when I graduate, I would like to come back and live in the living quarters aspect of the barn. Of course, that will be in the future, but for the most part, I do not plan on doing anything that would send me overseas or anywhere else in the country, so far away that I could not reside in these living quarters for a few years' time at least. The, the property is solely an equestrian property. There is a dressage arena, and the barn does have, the barn is solely for equine. And, um...
If you will, go ahead and summarize. You're fine.
I, I'm sorry.
You're good.
But I do not. Thank you.
Any questions? Any questions, folks? Thank you, you did an excellent job. Ms. Brenda Campbell? Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, thank you. I am Kristin Campbell Worsham's mother, and I do not reside in Pennsylvania County. I reside in Amherst County. There's not a lot I can say that hasn't already been said. But I just feel like, you know, I've been coming and visiting there so often for so many years, I guess now fourteen, fifteen years, and we walk Cherrystone Road. And I have seen the horses in the field and a barn to the right, not too far from Cherrystone Road. You can see it within distance. At the end of the road, there's beautiful tobacco, I believe, that's growing there. And it is, it's a very well-kept and maintained road, except for a couple of houses right on the end. But like I said, the land was purchased, the barn, the house barn that they're trying to get built, they've had numerous interruptions from certain neighbors on that street, two, to be sure of, that have come and demanded that construction stop. And due to all this, my daughter and her husband have really suffered slander, persecution, and actually threats. And that may not make any bearing or have any bearing on your decision, but I think it does need to be heard. They're very, they are very conscientious, honest, respectful people. They have always been very careful to follow the letter of the law and do everything correctly. So I just wanted to have a minute to share that with you, for what it's worth.
Any questions? Thank you.
I think I do have.
Dr. Milk, excuse me. Yes, sir, go ahead.
I do have a question. Did you, did I hear you correctly say that your family members have had threats?
Um, yes.
Would you elucidate a bit?
Well, I'd rather not go into that right now, I know that.
I mean telephone, personally? Written?
Well, my daughter confronted one person to offer a neighborly thing to do for them, to help them out, and she was attacked verbally and spoken to, like she's never been spoken to, to my knowledge. And of course, Kristin doesn't back down, she reasons with people. She appeals to the, I guess, to the best dignity in people, and she was able to kind of resolve it. But we're hearing a lot of things that are very nasty, a lot of lies that are being spread. And as a mother, it breaks my heart because I know who my daughter is and my son-in-law, and you would not find two more credible, honest, and diligent people as they are.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Brenda Hackworth? Did I pronounce that right?
I decline.
Thank you. Ms., is that Shanna Shorter? Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, welcome, and thank you, Mr. Chairman and, and members of the Planning Commission. I'm sorry, I got separated on the sign-up sheet, I was talking too much, as y'all, some of you know, I love people. So I just wanted, first of all, thank you so much for the opportunity to get up here and speak today. Have to tell you, I don't envy y'all's decisions and trying to make a resolution to these. But I wanted to speak just a little bit to you. In two thousand eight, my husband and I and our young son looked for a home in the Chatham area, and we fell in love with Cherrystone Road. And coming from the county, I guess you say deeper in the county, we knew that we did not wanna be in any kind of A1 area. So we did our research, we polled all of the property maps, and looked at everything for our area before making that decision to purchase a home. And as you know, purchasing a home for a lot of people is probably one of the biggest investments that they make in their life, I mean, that's our home. And so that being said, you know, looking at Pennsylvania County, Pennsylvania County is the biggest county in the Commonwealth of Virginia. We are primarily an agricultural county, but what I was just gonna say is that Cherrystone Road is a very dense area for houses, and we tried to be as close as we could be to Chatham proper. And in doing so, I want to also mention that, with all due respect to all the people speaking this evening and about this matter, my home is the only one touching, my property is the only one touching this property line. And my residents is the only one that joins it in question. I have to live with your decision at the end of the day, in at the rear of my backyard. And, you know, I can't, unlike the Worshams, I can't drive away from this every night. I can't pick my home up and go to another home, my home is there. And so this truly does affect me. And, and to also address an issue that they, that was brought up earlier by Ms. Worsham, she said that there was no access. Well, I can tell you that we do know that they do own the property that is in front of this, that is right along Cherrystone Road. So they do have contiguous property access from that parcel all the way to a state road. And that happened this July, where they purchased that land from the Pruitt's, our old neighbors, so.
Yeah, Shorter, I'll ask you to summarize if you will.
Yes, I'm so sorry, thank you.
You're good, no, no.
Again, I love to talk. So therefore, I just wanted to just say that I do request for a denial of this application of zoning just because it would stand out as, as being different. So, thank you so much for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
Any questions? Thank you. That's all I have, the signed up on the sheet. If anyone here did not have the opportunity, please come forward, state your name and address, please. Good evening and welcome, sir.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Jeff Connor, live at one nineteen Kendall Court, which is directly across from the said property. I don't know anything about all the legalities, but all I can say is the Worshams have been nothing but respectful to myself and my family. They have questioned us if anything offended us that they were doing. They've asked my opinion, they've offered to help keep the road up. And I have no problem with it. When I come out my door every morning, I'm gonna be looking at it. But I have no problem with it. I was raised in the country, so they've been nothing but honest to me. So anyone who says they haven't been, I don't know that. But to me and my family, they've been honest, respectful. And like I said, I have no problem with it.
Any questions for Mr. Connor?
Yep, your house is, what is, is it four hundred feet, or is it further than that from the building? Or from the bar, boundary line?
It might be. A little further from the building itself, I mean, the fence, only thing separates us is the driveway.
That's what I was thinking.
Which I have kept up since I bought the property, which has been, I think, ten years. So, like I said, I know nothing about the legalities of all this, but I have no problem with it. And that's all I can say, they've been good to me, and I trust them, and I think they're good people.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Connor.
Thank you.
Oh, that's, is there anyone else? If not, Ms. Worsham?
So, a few things just to stand out to me immediately from some of the complaints here. One was that, or the suggestion that I did not perform my appropriate due diligence before I purchased the land. So, before I even made an offer on the land, I went to the Pennsylvania County Land Records and performed a preliminary title search and deed search. I sought out restrictions specifically as they might relate to the purpose that I had for the land. The, the restrictions that were in place were put in there in the seventies, they had expired, and they only applied to mobile homes. In addition, I was well aware that the property was zoned R1, and so I obtained, I went to the zoning office, I went to the administrator's office, and I obtained a copy of what's called the incidental agriculture clause. The incidental agriculture clause specifically allows agriculture in all, all residential, residentially zoned parcels. It limits that agriculture use to five acres, and I have it in front of me. Incidental agriculture is permitted in any district that allows residential uses, provided that such agricultural use shall not occupy over five acres and shall not be objectionable by reason of odor, dust, noise, pollution, and erosion, or drainage. So I spoke with Ms. Gwen Tucker and folks in zoning, horses are allowed. I moved forward that very same day, I knew I had no deed restrictions on the land, I knew that incidental agriculture was allowed. I should further say that on Cherrystone Road, within sight of this parcel, there is a house that I can see and is actually in Mr. Connor's backyard. It's about two acres, and there were two horses on that property for, for a number of years. So I knew there was a precedent for horses. In addition to the Wilsons who are across the street and have two horses and are zoned, are zoned A1 as well, there was a precedent. So I was comfortable having these assurances that this land was fit for my intended purpose. A lot of people are calling it a barn today. It is called a barn house, as I spoke to, spoke of earlier. It is a two-bedroom, two-bath, kitchen, office, laundry room residence. It is being built to, to the Virginia Building Uniform Code. And Mr. Henderson is again ensuring that that is all done appropriately and legitimately. I will say it's a quite attractive building. It has a steep pitched roof. We spent quite a bit on doors and on, on the fittings that we're going to put into, into the property. It will be not an eyesore as it is portrayed to be here today. So, in all parcels on Cherrystone Road, all incidental agriculture is permitted. There has also been raised, and I did my due diligence before I purchased the land, it has also been raised that, it has also been raised as to why I might be seeking to rezone from R1 to A1, and that potentially there is a, an intent, an ill-intent. I will take one minute to explain to you why I am seeking this rezone. The first is because I am, I do believe in the order of the law, and this is a non-conforming lot. It clearly belongs in A1, and it will not be a standout. It has been said that it is surrounded by R1 parcels. Mrs. Newby's parcel, who I share a long border with, is also a non-compliant lot. She is zoned R1, she does not have the appropriate road frontage between her sidelines that is prescribed, nor is her acreage consistent with that as well. And she also abuts B2. In the actual, the language of R1, it explicitly states in the purpose to separate commercial from residential. So I am an R1, currently an R1 lot adjacent to business, without any road frontage whatsoever. It was also mentioned that we purchased the lot from the Pruitt's, that is absolutely correct, we own that. That is a separate parcel. I am not seeking rezoning, nor am I seeking to combine the two lots. I am solely focused on this parcel, and that is the matter at hand in, in front of the commission as, as well today. The second reason that I'm seeking, so to comply with the law, the second reason I'm seeking this is because I believe that there is an intolerance for agriculture, or incidental agriculture, by certain individuals who live on this street, as has been expressed. We heard there's an intolerance for noise, odor, perhaps sight, erosion, these types of things, which naturally do occur when you have, when you have animals. It is permitted, it is part of Pennsylvania County zoning ordinance and law. And when we talk about individuals trying to usurp the property rights or override the property rights of others, what's, what appears to be happening here is a desire to completely eradicate the incidental agriculture clause, which I would purport would have very negative repercussions for this county as a whole, as we are an agricultural community. And I would also encourage you to think about all of the children that are involved in FFA. If we strike incidental agriculture, or we make it so difficult, so difficult for people who have residentially zoned lots, for their children to be able to raise a calf, or a hog, or a horse, or a sheep, or a goat for FFA, then I think that's, that's wrong. We're severely limiting and stepping into individual rights. So when you do, do your due diligence to purchase a home, as I did, I knew what the law said, I knew it was permitted. If others are unaware that, that there is an incidental agriculture clause, then they are aware now, and should be aware, that would be part of their due diligence. So, I'm seeking to rezone, to be in compliance, and because I believe that I will never be allowed to have my property, excuse me, have my property in peace and do what I wish to do with my property, because there will be incessant and non-ceasing complaints against me for everything. And I say that based on history. In April, I was called on the telephone and told I could not have horses on my property. Now, I knew this to be wrong, it was quickly corrected. The second, and it, and it actually started a beautiful relationship, a collaborative relationship with the Economic Community Development, Community Development Group. But since that time, there have been complaints for dust, and the dust complaint was lodged when we were actually putting down lime fertilizer and seed in anticipation, in early September, in anticipation of rains that never came from a hurricane. You, you mentioned, someone here spoke of erosion, so we did have a gully washer, it's been very dry, everybody knows. It's a drought, weather, as anybody knows, is beyond our, our control. We did have a gully washer, as I spoke to you earlier, our lot is sloped. We have spent a considerable amount of money seeking to fix and remedy runoff and to control erosion. We did have a gully washer come in, and it washed a lot of our seed and some, from an area seed down the hill, but I will note that it was, it was contained by our fencing and our own lot, it never left our parcel. And that will be redistributed, and in fact, our lands, our land excavating, individuals coming back. And so now he sees where our issues are, and we can continue to correct those. So, it is a house, that's what I wanna say, it's a house, we have every intention, we're working towards completing it. It is going to be a lovely house. In fact, in a magazine, I think it's called Central Virginia Home, they recently profiled a, what they called a barn dominium, it's a horse barn and house combination. It was built by CNS Structures out of Forest, Virginia, they are a premier builder. This is their own property, this is what they chose to do. I don't think that if Pennsylvania County doesn't, I think we should embrace, you know, new, new types of housing, especially because it's so attractive to equine enthusiasts. And I also think we have to be very careful about the message that we're sending to our residents of the county about incidental agriculture and about our general, our general perspective and attitude towards the equine community. We are an agricultural community, we have the ODAC Center, we have Averit, which has a stellar riding program, we have several Frisian barns in the area, of course, we have Chatham Hall. And so we should be supporting, supporting and growing, and trying to develop more revenue opportunities such as this, rather than. rather than being mired in, mired in, well, we've never seen it before, so we don't, we don't like it or we don't want it. So, I think my property rights are, are very important. I paid for, I bought the lot. I've taken risks. I've put in a considerable amount of investment. And my mother spoke about a threat. And I, I have been told that the desire is to re-nig or take back that building permit that I have and to remove, calls me to remove my structure and fencing, which is a significant threat, because my husband and I have a considerable investment in that. So, that's about all I have to say. I think I've said a lot here. So, if there's any other questions or concerns, I'd be happy to address them from the Planning Commission.
Any questions for him?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. At eight eleven.
Sorry, ma'am. Just one moment. I know, I know we're going long here.
Sir, they are applicants, as I read the precept at the start of the meeting. I read the precept at the start of the meeting that anyone, the applicants are not limited to three minutes, but anyone else. Mr. Hunt, is that, since he's part of it and he's, he's on the applicant, yes, sir?
I'm sorry. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Motley, we greatly appreciate your time. And we, and we greatly appreciate the fact that you've said here and listened to all this. And this has gone long. It's gone long for us, so I know it's long for you. We appreciate the job you do and the duty you perform. With, the only point I want to make is with regard to that adjacent lot, we did buy the lot from the Pruitt's and we brought, bought that lot for the sole purpose of getting power to our building. So, I will tell you, that was thirty thousand dollars that I did not plan to spend. And I really don't have a plan right this minute for what I'm going to do with that property, other than put power across it. The second point I want to make is on the residence. The question's been, you know, folks have mentioned our home, the home that we have now at Cherrystone. It's a nice home. We enjoy living there. Mr. Simpson, to our right, has been a wonderful neighbor. You know, the whole neighborhood, we haven't had, minus a few exceptions, here and there, too many hiccups. But the barn dominium, that my family calls it, the reason I put two bedrooms up there and two baths and well septic, all that, is because of these horses. It's a half mile from our house. If there's something going on with the horse, I know that my daughter and wife are going to be there primarily. So, that, that's, that's the purpose for the residence. That's all I have, and thank you again.
Any questions for him?
He also presented a petition for the case and a letter from their attorney, Jessica Burgess, so out for the record.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. At eight thirteen, case R nineteen dash oh three ones closed to public hearing. I would like to say I received calls, fault, and oppose this zoning. I want to thank everyone who called, expressed their opinion. That's what we need and I appreciate it. Also, I want to appreciate the ones that came and talked to me in person or had me, meet me in person. I appreciate it and expressing our points of view. I thank y'all. Oh, as you know, this is in the Chatham Blavos District, for which I represent. My summary, plus what you've heard here tonight, is that I met with Mr. Ms. Worsham on September the twenty second. And on September the twenty eighth, regarding the partial, and I'll use the last four digits of seven two nine one to discuss the rezoning of the aforementioned property from R1 to A1. When I met with the Worshams on, on September the twenty second, they informed me that the partial in question was not in compliance with the current zoning ordinance. On September the twenty third, I contacted Ms. Karen Hayes, Deputy Director of the Community Development and Zoning Office, who confirmed that the partial seven two nine one was out of compliance and being zoned R1. After Ms. Hayes confirmed that the property was in non-compliance with the zoning ordinance, I contacted Mr. Vaden Hunt, County Attorney, and Mr. Greg Sides, the County Administrator and zoning office for an interpretation of the zoning ordinance. They suggested that partial seven two nine one was in compliance based on section thirty-five dash five one and section thirty-five dash one six one of the zoning ordinance. I acknowledge that some of the conditions as outlined in section thirty-five dash five one may be arguable. I would also like to acknowledge the following considerations. One, that the current designations of property is currently not in compliance with the zoning ordinance on A. Based on Division Three, Section Thirty-five dash two two four, R1 zoning must have a minimum of seventy-five feet road frontage on a state-maintained road. Partial seven two nine one does not have any road frontage on a state-maintained road. The current road frontage faces a private road only. Two, of the four zoning classifications that are illustrated on the map of the Worsham case in our package, A1 is the only permitted classification that meets the Pennsylvania County's ordinance that supports the building permit issued to the Worshams and meets our request for changing the zoning classification of partial seven two nine one as presented in the commissioner's package. Redesigning partial seven two nine one from R1 to A1 does not constitute spot zoning. Since the following zoning partials are evident on the map, as presented again in our packages, is A. Two partials of M1 are approximately seven hundred and twenty-five feet and eight hundred feet from the aforementioned partial. B, three partials on A1 are approximately six hundred and eighty feet, seven hundred and twenty-five feet, and eight hundred and twenty-five feet from partial seven two nine one. Six partials are zone B2. Two partials are adjacent to the property of seven two nine one. Two partials are approximately one hundred and fifty feet from the Worshams property. Three, one partial is approximately three hundred and seventy-five feet from the Worshams property. And one is approximately seven hundred and seventy-five feet from the Worshams property. Forty-seven partials, plus or minus, I could have missed some when I was going through the package, are zoned R1, which four of them are in non-compliance with the zoning ordinance. And I have them listed, does not have the road frontage on a state-maintained road. Regarding section thirty-five fifty-one, I have witnessed in my years on the Planning Commission that the citizens of Pennsylvania County have occasionally based concerns on these conditions as outlined in section thirty-five dash fifty-one, resulting in considerable expense of time and effort to work through these cases. If it's, anybody else wish to comment before I will ask for a motion? If not, I will recommend that we have a motion, that we recommend to the Board of Supervisors that they approve the change of zoning from R1 to A1.
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say something.
Yes, Ms. Meese.
Yes.
Before we have the motion.
Okay.
Yes. This is a very difficult case, to say the least. I think all of us have, sometime since we've been on the board, have witnessed the same thing. My thinking is if you want to control a lot in your neighborhood, then you need to purchase it. And then you can decide what you want to do with it. And number two, I do think that Mr. Motley has certainly done his homework. He has talked to both sides of the aisle. This is why we've elected him as chairman of our commissioning board, because he does his homework. As you can see, a three-page letter of detailed documentation. He listens to the citizens. He wants what's best for the citizens, what's best for the county. And I think it's very evident tonight, if you listen to him. He is passionate about his position, about doing what's best. And I think he's certainly made the right decision.
Thank you, Ms. Meese. Any other comments?
No, I was going to second.
Second.
I was going to second.
Any other discussions? Motion by Mr. Stowe, second by Dr. Miller. We recommend to the Board of Supervisors that the zoning be changed from R1 to A1. Any other discussions? If not, Ms. Hayes, will you call the robe?
Mr. Motley?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Stowe?
Yes.
Ms. Meese?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Haymore?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
By case R nineteen dash oh three one, by a vote of eight four zero against, is recommended to the Board of Supervisors that the zoning be changed from R1 to A1. And I appreciate everybody cooperating. Thank y'all. At eight twenty-one, case S nineteen dash oh one two is open to public hearing. Ms. Hayes?
Case S nineteen oh one two, Walter Yarborough has petitioned for a special use permit on point five four of an acre located on Gap Road in the Callens-Gretton election district to allow placement of a single wide mobile home for residence. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman Gar Yarborough is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Yarborough, will you come forward, please? Good evening and welcome.
Mr. Chairman.
Nothing else to add.
Any questions for Mr. Yarborough?
Mr. Yarborough, this is in my district. Have you met the criteria with the county code?
Yes.
Have the HUD label has been established?
Yes, ma'am.
Good. I have no further questions.
Any other questions? No one has signed up on this? Is anyone here wish to address this before we close it? If not, thank you, sir. At eight twenty-two, case S nineteen dash oh one two is closed to public hearing. Ms. Meese?
You may be seated.
Mr. Motley, again, I have received no opposition on this case. So, in case S dash nineteen dash oh one two, I make a recommendation that this board recommend to the Board of Zoning Appeals that this request be honored.
Second.
I second.
Motion by Ms. Meese, second by Mr. Horn, that case S nineteen dash oh one two be, uh, recommend, I lost my thought again, to the DCA?
Right.
That a single wide mobile home be placed on this property. Any discussions? If not, Ms. Hayes, will you call the robe?
Mr. Motley?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Stowe?
Yes.
Ms. Meese?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Haymore?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Case S nineteen dash oh one two, by a vote of eight four zero against, is recommended to the Board of Zoning Appeals that a special use permit be allowed for the placement of a single wide mobile home. That concludes the public hearing.
Let's check.
Excuse me.
Mr. Chairman, let, let me ask you, on the, on the Worsham case, was it ever mentioned anywhere the profit that they made?
That, the motion should be with the profit.
That's what I want to make sure.
Thank you for correcting me on that. Is that correct, Mr. Stowe?
Yes.
Dr. Miller, is that correct or second?
Did all sides understand that?
Yes.
Okay.
And the profit has been signed and was presented to all of y'all. Thank you, Dr., I mean, not Mr. Haymore.
I've been called in.
Dr. Haymore.
Yeah, Dr.
Well, we got two doctors on this.
Old business. Irish Road, Southern. Ms. Hayes?
Okay, they provided the site development plan and at the request of the Planning Commission, they wanted it brought back just for review. I have the entire plan, but I basically took out the sections of interest. It will show you the line of trees and then it will also show you on the plan that the, they intend to put four to six-foot trees at installation.
Thank you.
If y'all want to look at that, pass it down and we just need a motion.
You need approval of the site development?
Yes, just need a motion and, and motion. And Greg has been working with them on the decommissioning, landscaping, and maintenance.
You say aside with the side?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We've reviewed a vegetation management plan, an operations and maintenance plan, and a decommissioning plan. We offered comments back to the company for revisions. Those comments, those revisions have been made. There's a couple of little minor housekeeping things in terms of the mechanics of the bond. But at this point, they're not ready to post the bond. They're going to do the land disturbing portion first. I've had, in my discussions with the company, I think it was their desire to get the land disturbing permit, which is addressed through the site plan, and then come back for the building permit at a later date after they finish the earthwork, after the site's stabilized.
Greg, the, the trees to begin with are what?
Four to six foot, at planning.
No, that's the last thing. Talk to all that.
And I highlighted the areas that would be the buffer of trees.
Any discussion? Uh, motion, we approve the site?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Haymore, second by?
I second.
Second by Mr. Dudley. Any discussions? Uh, should this be, this is not a public hearing on that approval, is it?
It's just for your review.
For review. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion's passed. Eight four zero against. New business.
I don't have any, Mr. Chairman.
I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman.
I need to ask a question.
Oh, Mr. Horn, just go ahead.
And it may to be inappropriate place to ask, but I'll ask. You must decide. Talking about site plans and buffers and the trees and, you know, we, we kind of slipped on that Kentuck solar, solar plant. And they were small Leland Cypress trees that were planted and we really dropped the ball. Well, all of those little trees are dead now. Can we now go back and say, plant the proper sized trees?
On my phone, I have pictures very recently of the dead trees.
Thank you very much.
We are in preparation. Yeah, we're in preparation of a letter back to the company.
Thank you very much.
We have screening requirements. Doesn't really matter what was originally, but there are screening requirements that they agreed to that we will.
It's odd that just the Leland Cypress are the ones that died. But I thought this was an opportune time to.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
It's in the works.
Greg, you'll copy them on that letter, right?
Yes.
Any other?
Good job. Thank Greg.
Eight twenty-eight, meeting adjourned. Thank y'all.